You all this summer months, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And I have a quorum here tonight. Correct, Brian? We all good? Okay. Good. We'll start with comments from the audience. This is opportunities for members of the audience to address the board. The presentation should be as brief as possible. A speaker will be limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted. Thanks, Brian. I know who I have, I'm assuming. Thanks. All right. Susan Struie.
But I want everybody to stand, please, before I speak and do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Thank you. I just had a little bit to say. I just wanted to just talk on choices. It seems like that seems to be a popular thing. Choices play a major part of fulfilling destiny, an act of selecting or making a decision when faced with two or more possibilities. Choice is an option. When you make, after thinking about it, what do you consider? Choosing between good and evil, one you will never regret. At least in many cases, regret kicks in sometimes after a month or years have gone by later. So who got hurt? And who is feeling good about the decision? Feeling good about yourself? I guarantee a wrong one, you will regret. Have you considered the outcome? Choices can make a difference in our lives. Good ones can lead to great accomplishments. We were given the gift of choice by God. He does not control everything. No one also can make any person do something against their will. God cannot make you do anything against your will. He stands by and just waits. Make a decision with what is right according to principles, laws, and the Constitution, not what is unacceptable. We must consider our values because they impact our decisions. Values are something we believe in so much that they guide your behavior. To make the right choices, our values need to be aligned with God's values. We must create structure by choosing. God always plays a part, no matter what the choice is, or maybe the evil side plays a part. Who helps you choose good or evil? You must take responsibility for your choices, and few people are willing to pay the price and lay blame elsewhere. What is the purpose for your decisions? Is it going to solve the problem correctly or make matters worse? The outcome is a major one. Does it follow good or evil? What is the eternal outcome? It matters where your heart is, good or evil. Jesus is still the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Struie. Hi, Jeff.
Hi. Why do I always have to follow her?
I think that you chose that a long time ago.
It happens, doesn't it?
Same last name.
I did some quotes quite a while back on some of our patriot people, and I'm going to do some quotes on... This was a message given to a pastor in Texas a couple of Sundays ago. Here's a good quote from one of our friends Adolf Hitler, the biggest fascist that ever lived. "He alone who owns the youth gains the future." How about a Marxist quote from the man himself, Karl Marx? "The education of all children, from the moment that they can get along without a mother's care, shall be in state institutions." The number one leading communist ever in the world, Vladimir Lenin, two quotes. First one, "Give me four years to teach the children, and the seed I have sown will never be uprooted." And he also said, "Give me just one generation of youth, and I will transform the whole world." And now from the U.S. Communist Party Education Workers Congress, three quotes. "We must create out of our younger generation a generation of communists. We must turn children, who can be shaped like wax, into real good communists. And we must remove the children from the crude influence of their families. We must take them over and, to speak frankly, nationalize them." And lastly, a third quote, "From the first days of their lives, they will be under the healthy influence of communist children's nurseries and schools. There they will grow up to be real communists." That came out of a pulpit two weeks ago at a church in Fort Worth, Texas. Then the Holy Spirit spoke to him and said, "I want you to deliver this message. The devil is once again trying to turn a whole generation away from me. This is the Lord. He is trying to turn them to darkness, and he is using a lot of people to try and accomplish this. Don't let them get away with it. I say one word: It's unacceptable." I would like to thank our new superintendent. I think we're the only ones, maybe, that graduated from DSU that's sitting here, so congratulations.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeanette Gibbons.
Good late afternoon.
Yes.
And I wrote down as my topic for tonight, building trust. And I hope you'll take my comments in that spirit. Now, they may sound a little harsh, but please take in mind, my spirit behind them is we are building trust. And I think really quite a bit of our problem is coming from the media. So let me just read what I have here. I am speaking about things that I have seen published in the news media, published on websites, material pertaining to you as elected officials, you know, appointed officials also in our government, and personnel in our South Dakota Department of Education. So this came from Brookings Register article on May 19th by Dana Hess, and the title, "Brookings School District's Reputation Attracted Incoming Superintendent Summer Schultz." Welcome, Summer. Dr. Schultz, I should be polite. And what I am taking out of that article are excerpts that are the author of the article. So I'm not saying these are direct quotes made by Summers. I just want to be clear on that. So in the article, "The Brookings School District's new superintendent faces some challenges. She'll need to allay the anxiety of a community that saw its district go on probation during the school accreditation process. She'll have to bolster community confidence in the district after the school board eased out her predecessor." And then near the end of the article, "Schultz knows it will take some time to ease the anxiety of patrons worried about the stability of the district after an accreditation probation scare and the firing of the superintendent." So I mean, that article escalated pretty quickly. It was a short article. We went from the superintendent being eased out to fired, and we're under this extreme anxiety about our accreditation process. And I brought that topic to light before. I'm going to reiterate some of my points there. The South Dakota Department of Education first implemented on probation as summary of performance, SOP, for accreditation reviews in 2018-19 academic year. In a list that I obtained from a lawyer in the state education office, 54 schools have been on probation since that 2018-19 start. In a phone conversation directly with Secretary Joseph Graves, I was very pointed in my questions, and that conversation occurred before the March 22nd school board meeting, just before I got here. And I asked him if the district was at risk of losing their accreditation, and he said, "No." And that means that if we're not at risk of losing our accreditation, we're not at risk of losing funds. And then he said, and again, on my pointed questions, "No school in South Dakota has ever lost accreditation." So looking at those stories, it leads the public to believe things that possibly aren't quite true. So I would expect good, clear communication between us, and when we ask for questions, ask questions, give us answers as much as you can. I understand some matters are confidential, and I don't expect you to breach that. But we, as the public, need to have clear understanding as much as possible, or else we have these runaway stories. So then on my own research, looking at the accreditation.
Right, three minutes.
All right. I'm just going to get one quick thing in. Wall School District was on probation for 14 consecutive months, from January of 2022 to March of 2023, and the sky didn't fall on them. Thank you for the extra time.
All right. Looking for motion of approval of our agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Moved by Teresa and seconded by Wes. Comments? All right, Brian, we're ready for that vote. Great. Deb, will you read the school district mission statement for us?
The Brookings School District prepares all learners to be confident, engaged citizens, empowered to impact the ever-changing and interconnected world.
Thank you. Now is our time for our conflict of interest declarations. These would be any items on the agenda that could be considered conflict of interests. Brian, do we have any this evening?
At this time, we have none.
Okay. There are none tonight. All right. Well, we have a fun personnel update and introduction to make tonight, and so I'm grateful. We have Dr. Summer Schultz with us tonight. And yeah, late afternoon, thank you. Dr. Schultz comes to us from Dell Rapids. She's served as a superintendent there for 11 years. She's been a superintendent for 15 years and counting. We're really eager and excited to welcome Summer to Brookings and the Brookings Bobcat family. We're eager, I know from her contacts with us, we're eager for her to get to work. We welcome her with really high expectations and a lot of support. Summer came to us with a strong background of leadership and vision. She serves on a National Early Learning Cohort, Educators Rising, or just a couple of the organizations she's a part of. She's currently the president of the South Dakota Superintendents Association, and she officially begins, even though some of her duties have begun, with us on July 1st. And so I'm also going to have Summer welcome a couple new hires as well. But thank you, Summer, for being here tonight and introducing yourself, so. The green light on? Green light on?
Okay.
Yep.
Well, thank you, first off, too. Before I move into my own introductions, I have spent a small amount of time here, and I can tell you that all of the reasons that I decided to apply and decided to move my own family to Brookings and the Brookings School District are all becoming reality. I have been visiting some of your administrators, been able to visit with staff, community members, and if you look, if you look very briefly and very shallowly, this district might have seemed like I wasn't sure what exactly I was getting into, because even though we're so close, worlds are far apart. I've been in Dell Rapids for a long time, but the more I dug into your school district, the more I knew I wanted to be a part of it, and the more I knew I wanted my daughter to go to school here. And so all things I have been seeing are proving that we made the right choice as a family to do that. So I do thank you for that, and I promise you, I will work hard. My number one mission, and it always has been, is kids. And there's a lot of things that sometimes want to get into the way of that. Throughout our country right now, we are losing sight that our school districts are about kids and about the success of kids. And I don't stop, and I work tirelessly for the health and the safety and the academic and the career, future success of the kids in my district. And I think that is why I've been so blessed to work in communities that have supported me, and I have supported them, because we are all moving for that vision. And I will do just that here at Brookings also. So that being said, I have been able to make two very good hires for you, I feel like. And I'm going to, first, she's not here tonight because, as you know, Minnesota starts and ends school at a different time. And so our new, our new high school principal, Heather Miller-Sink, just had graduation yesterday. And so as you can imagine, she is, she is very busy. But Heather is not new to South Dakota. She grew up, she went to Lincoln High School in Sioux Falls. I didn't know this at the time I interviewed her, but her father and my father were both longtime athletic directors in South Dakota, and I think there might even be a story or two about them out there that we're not going to bring up. But small world, I didn't, I didn't have any idea about that when I interviewed her. But what I will tell you is she leads with excellence. She like my, what was exactly what I was looking for. She understands adversity in our school systems with, with all of the things we are trying to do with kids and staff, and she does it so gracefully. And I think you're going to see that when you meet her. She earned her Bachelor's of Arts in Music Education from Gus Davis. She began working in South Dakota out west, and I believe she even spent a little bit of time in Kadoka, and she was a high school music and choir teacher. So 20 years of administrative experience, and when she talks, you can tell, there's just not much she hasn't seen. Her and her husband will be moving back. They have a daughter who's currently playing basketball for Dakota Wesleyan, and I think their plan is to get back to South Dakota and stay put. So we are lucky to have her. And she will be in Brookings next week, beginning to make, make a move in. So I think, like I said, she is going to be a great addition. The second hire is, it's a great, a great hire. I will say that when we interviewed for the Activities Director, we had a good group of applicants. We had a really good group. One stood out to me on a little bit of bias, but I didn't want to say that to anyone. And by the time we got done with the interview committee, the team knew what I, what I thought coming in, and his current superintendent was very proud when that group said, "We got to have this guy. This guy is going to build pride." Not build it, but keep building on what you've already started. I will tell you that Mr. Jeff DeVorek works tirelessly. He and his wife, who I believe, maybe we snagged in an, in an interview today also, they are fixtures at, at every event in our district right now. It is what they do. They support kids. They support coaches and directors. Not often in an interview do you have the music department and the athletic department saying, "We want this guy." But that is exactly what happened. And so I have not made people in Dell Rapids very happy, because I have taken one of the hardest working administrators they have had. But I'm going to turn it over and let him introduce himself, Mr. Jeff DeVorek.
Summer.
Good late afternoon. I'm Jeff DeVorek. That was very kind of you. Thank you. So just a little bit about myself, but before I get there, I, I too like Summer. I've been able to put my work in Dell Rapids, and I'm trying to finish up, and come up here and look for houses, which is daunting, and, and got to high school today and met some of the people there. And I just want to say that the feeling that you get when you come here, it just kind of reiterates that you did the right thing. My wife and I came up, and we've been, we've been seeing people, and a lot of faces like this, a lot of smiling faces, a lot of handshakes, a lot of people really excited about Brookings, and it just feels really, really right. I started out, very small-town guy. I'm from Tabor, South Dakota. Anybody know where that is? Nice, home of check days. It's next weekend, so. If you like kolaches and check days. So went to Bonham High School, then I went to USF, played a little basketball there, and graduated, had a job out at Bennett County High School, where I was a head boys' basketball coach, and directed Grease. It's quite a combination. Yep. And then I came back East River, and at Dell Rapids, I have been the head girls' basketball coach, I've been a junior high volleyball coach, I directed the one-act play, just have been a part of everything from soup to nuts, as they say, and, and just, I really, Summer alluded to it, but I really believe heavily in the, in the fine arts athletic combination. And we have, in Dell Rapids, we don't, we have some kids who excel in both, who are our lead singer in the musical, and they're also on the All-State Choir. We have some. And talking in the interview, had a great conversation with coaches and fine arts folks alike, where there is, there's a feeling that we need more of that. And I absolutely agree. I was that kid. I was that kid who was an All-State Choir kid and in every sport imaginable. So I understand it, and I would like to bring that, that emphasis here, just that feeling I got, I'm sure it's, it's, it's there, and I know there's a strong track record, but I just want to continue that. And like I said, I'm just really excited about the opportunity to come here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And welcome to both of you and to Heather as well, and we're excited to have you. They didn't throw rocks at Wes when he drove through Dell Rapids. He had a hat and sunglasses on, but it was okay. Any other comments, board members? Okay.
Just welcome. We're excited to have you onboard, both of you.
All right. We will go ahead and move on to our communication discussion items and start with our board communications, first being the Performance Oversight Committee.
The only thing we have is on the agenda later, and that is the MOU for the Helpline Center, Center for Hope. And we're really excited about that, because I think it's going to be beneficial to our, especially to our social worker, because it will provide data. And so when we get to that later, but that's the only thing we have as far as performance oversight.
Great. Facilities and construction. I have a couple things. Wes, do you want to start? Okay. I'm going to have Jason put up a couple photos, Chris and Shannon, the principals that both Hillcrest and Midary have been doing a weekly aerial photo. And so we'll be able to show those to both of you, to all of you, and then Jason will put those online as well. From our project manager, Pierce, the updates are, "Both projects are still tracking as planned," which is excellent news. "We're wrapping up most of the earthwork preparation, and we're phasing into structure now." And so you'll see buildings starting to go vertical with structural steel and structural block in the next three to four weeks, which is really exciting. And then over the next couple of months, those buildings will just start to take shape. And so I believe this is Chris's photo, correct? Yep, Midary. Great. Yeah. Really exciting. Really exciting. Thank you. From both of the building principals, they are feeling really great about our partnerships with our teams. There's been ton of communication, ton of professionalism from both of those groups, and everything is just going good so far, so nothing additional to report from my end there.
I would just add, as you made reference to, what you've seen so far is kind of under the ground, and I think the Midary report last week says they're going to start seeing structural framing going on, which then the, I think that'll get the attention of our community, so. And so as far as the pictures, maybe there's more to come that maybe Jason and Brian can get approval from the contractors to post them in some way, which, which would be of some value to those who are following. So thank you.
And I would just like to comment, I've been so impressed. I just live east of Hillcrest, and they are there early in the morning working, and they are there late in the evening working, and they work Saturdays. So I know they're really working hard to keep on schedule, and I really appreciate that, because that's been a struggle for some of our building projects in the past. So just really impressed with the work ethic that I'm seeing.
I might add, according to the reports, they've only lost three days due to weather, which is, which is, has, we need the rain on one hand, but on the other hand, this puts them on schedule, kind of making up for maybe some of the delays they had initially from a start date they projected last fall, so.
Additional thing I was going to add is that Dr. Schultz will have a full presentation from the entire team on June 20th to go through sort of our thought processes, all the budgetary information, and just kind of lay out, and all of the leaders of Clark Drew, Hausmann, ARC, Inc., as well as Brian, Wes, and Facilities Crew, Team will all be there. And so just trying to get Summer up to speed at the best we can. All righty. Anything from Policy and Governance Committee?
Yes, we met this afternoon. We have several policies tonight for the first reading, and one for the second reading and approval, and then several more for notification, and I'll just give, we can give more information when we get, get there. Right, Deb, anything you want to add?
Yeah, and we're just finding, as we go through these, there's some redundancy in some of our policies, and in the past, when the policies were updated, a policy that had previously been in effect was not deleted. So we're trying to take care of some of that, and so it's really slowed us down a little bit, but I think when we get all done, it's going to be really beneficial.
Yeah, we'll be ready to start over again and go back through.
I appreciate, appreciate your trudging. Thank you both.
Then you'll have to forgive me. I should have raised this last meeting when we talked about the policy on naming, and I'll share my thoughts with the chair, and she can, or share them with you. I think that's the best relative to some follow-up on the naming policy. Nothing, no showstoppers, just a few comments relative, since we have two facilities going up, we might want to look at some of the...
And that's fine. And we also had a couple of policies regarding activities. We thought we would have our new Activities Director take a look at those two before we put those in place. So yeah, we, we appreciate that, Wes. Anytime, we'll go back and take a look at those.
Could you bring those policies? We could just give them to Jeff.
End of the meeting. No, just kidding. All right. School Finance Committee. Teresa or Wes?
Later in the meeting, we're, we're going to, there's an action item, I believe. I don't, maybe Wes wants to talk further to that, capital outlay certificates and...
Actually, my comments are more centered on the bond resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, 10-5, whatever it is coming up.
Okay.
And so I'll just defer to that. But meanwhile, I think we have a preliminary budget that is approved at the May meeting, a final budget, we have approval later in, is it July? We have a, we have a balanced budget, and I think the room for, you know, might be maybe some tendency to expand it, but we need to be careful at this junction, because we know all the inputs, we know the states, and we know where compensation packages are for employees, pretty much, except for one small group. And so I think we just need to be careful not to add to the budget, given all the, all the pressures there might be for this and this and that when we have a preliminary approval from our last meeting, so. Kind of a, more of a word of caution then.
Teresa, good there? Yep. Okay. Mental Health Coalition?
The Mental Health Coalition meets again this month on Wednesday. As I mentioned earlier, May was designated as Mental Health Awareness Month, and there were just a lot of great activities. I think, I know some of you attended the Resilient Communities Event, which was held at the SwifteL Center. Billy Sutton was the keynote speaker, and he just did an amazing job. And another project that you've seen related to mental health are the murals that are going up around town. Kelo did a really nice story on that the other night about the mural and how they're using that to help families and individuals go and participate, to make them feel a part of the community and helping with that. And then a lot of discussion regarding 211, which is the new helpline number, and then 988, which is the National Suicide Hotline Number. And then this coming week, there's also a, a grant that was received by the Brookings School District on suicide prevention, and I know some of the teachers have signed up for that June 15th. And that was a project with Rotary here in Brookings. So those are some really, I think, amazing things that are happening with mental health in our community. It's a concern that we all have, and we continue to work on things that we can do to strengthen the mental health of our young people in our community.
Great. All right. General Board Member Communications.
Graduation went well. I was glad to take a part in that and get everyone through the line. And I just have one comment. If next year, if it's at SwifteL, if we could get the speakers facing, some speaker facing to us, so we could hear the speeches a little better, I'd appreciate that. But it was great, it was a great day. Yeah.
Quite the honor to hand out those diplomas, so good.
I'd just give a shout out to all the teachers and music directors, the end-of-the-year concerts, and the dare graduates.
year concerts, and the dare graduation to see all those fifth graders and just everybody. The teachers' work and all the administrators work so hard just to end it on such a positive note. But everything was just so well done. Band concerts, everything, choir concerts, track, everything was.
And Wes and Teresa and I were also at the Project Search graduation too, which is also a really good experience. I haven't been able to go other years, and so, I was just really impressed with that as well. And that's a cooperative program with SDSU, Lake Erie Tech, and then also other school districts, which I didn't realize how many other school districts were involved.
I was there as well too, and so, kind of interesting format, and worth attending. Yep.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to our other communication discussion items. 7.7, oops, I got to go back one. Sorry, Jason. Click happy over there.
This is required by.
Yeah, so.
Federal requirements.
Yep. Yep, so basically, I'm just presenting and allowing for public comment on the Bobcat Tracks to School Classroom Plan. So, part of receiving our district's American Rescue Plan relief, the ESR funding, the district's required to take public comment on its Safe Return Plan every six months. Assurances are due on June 16th this year. The assurance is required every six months through September of 2024. That's the life of the ARP, ESR funds, and at this time, we're not proposing any changes to that plan. So, I'm ready for public comment. Can I make one comment before the public comment? Of course I can.
You have the microphone.
I was just going to say that we do, we have had some discussions and do plan to look over this plan to get to, with Dr. Schultz's expertise, to get to a much shorter, brief, more time-appropriate plan. Just didn't have time to get that work done before this meeting. And so, we'll look to do that as well. Again, we're not approving the plan tonight. We're just taking public comment on the plan. And so, there's no approval needed by the board this evening. Again, it's just required for us to take public comment. I'm hoping to get to a shorter plan personally. All right, go ahead.
I like the idea of shorter. And I do appreciate this time to speak on this topic. As many of you know, or maybe all of you know, COVID has been a sore spot for me from the beginning. I saw the devastation of what happened through mandates, measures, vaccines, lockdowns, isolation of loved ones. I think I've seen the gamut. So, I do appreciate this chance to speak on it. And since we have this Bobcat Tracks Back to the Classroom Plan, this one was written, revised 6/21 and reviewed on 12/22. And I would start with the cover page. The Brookings School District Smart Start Plan to Open Schools Amidst a Global Pandemic. Scratch the global pandemic, it's gone. We had the end of the emergency in South Dakota on June 30th, '21. We had the end of our national emergency here with Biden signing off on April 10th of '23. And we have the WHO, which ended the COVID-19 Public Health Emergency of International Concern on May 5th of 2023. So, I would like to see that verbiage gone. And I go back to the December meeting that we had here, I believe it was December 12th for the regular meeting in 2022. And I didn't realize it was a public comment section, so I do appreciate this very clear note in your agenda to let me know that. And at that time, you know, there were a couple of things called out, Brother's Pharmacy being gone and the testing. And then, there was a question kind of brought up, or kind of a statement question about in December, well, this probably will be our last report. Well, no, 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 not our last report. And it was quickly mentioned that we have two more years of this. Now, it's hard for the public to look at that and say, hmm, that just doesn't make sense. So, why are we still talking about COVID and plans to get back to school when we are at safety level zero in my mind? And we were back in March of '20. Common sense, we needed clear guidance, we needed honesty throughout the public and from trusted agencies. So, safety level zero for me. And then, I'm going to end on a positive note because I do still see everything coming out where after everything we've gone through together over three years especially, where things have been pretty rough. And rough on the children, rough on the parents, rough on the community, rough on the staff, everybody, all of you. This is a literary piece that came across my radar this morning from a friend, and it's called "If This Time" by Kevin McCormick. And these are just some of the excerpts from it. Terry, you'll really appreciate this one. I know you like my literary choices. "If this time has taught me anything, it is that the tiny speck in this universe that we occupy is both wonderful and wondrous. And if we allow it to, the beauty around us can unlock the beauty within us and teach us far more than our schooling ever did. If this time has taught me anything, it is that success and how we measure it needs to be redefined, and that the only person to whom you should ever compare yourself is who you were yesterday. Make your growth game strong, and along the way, be kind to yourself. Future can be better and can be brighter, and we each have the power within us to make it so. There will be challenges to face along the way, to which there are many solutions. There is a source of resilience deep within us all. If this time does not teach us that time itself is precious, then we will have missed the lesson, the lesson that never before have the past and the future been so irrelevant, and that the quest to find ourselves has been fruitless to now, only because we've been searching in all the wrong places. We are here, we are now, we are each and every breath we take. Every day is a gift, a gift to begin again, and to grasp with both hands the fresh opportunity to learn, unlearn, and relearn if this time is not wasted." Thank you. I'll send you the complete piece with visuals that are beautiful.
Thank you. Eight.
Is this the last time we have to review this?
No.
Oh, it's one more?
Nope. Yep, so I read that. I'll read through that again.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, and it says, states it in the board meeting right down there. So, assurance are due June 16th. This is required every six months through September 2024.
Okay. So, I think in our, in the report, I don't think the other dates are listed past today, are they?
Assurances.
Are it listed the dates that we have.
So, the South Dakota Department of Ed puts those out on those due dates. Yep, so we've done it in June and December of each year.
Okay. I don't have it with me, but I thought there was a spot where it said all of those dates that we've done it so far. And I thought tonight, today's was the last one that was listed in that.
Oh, okay.
So, maybe that's something to.
Look at.
Look at.
Yep.
And I had a few other edits that I sent.
I have about six pages, so, yeah, edits, but we can work on that. Yeah, we'll get, we'll get down to that. Okay, yep. All right. Let's see. Okay, the next item would be discussion on moving the July 17th, 2023 Board Meeting. Just know that that's going to be something that we need to do. Amanda sent out a doodle poll for that today. Dr. Schultz is at the superintendent's conference during that time. So, do we want to just wait on that doodle poll results instead of having calendars all out right now? Or? Did you have a?
We talked about it a little bit.
Oh, you did.
Talked about it a little bit today because we had policy committee meeting.
Okay.
And Dr. Schultz came into the office while we were there. And so, we discussed possibly moving it to July 19th.
I don't know if that was too late for you, Brian? Okay.
Well, we talked as well, and the 19th actually is a very good date.
Wednesday? Wednesday, July 19th? Does that work for you, Wes? Wednesday, July 19th?
Turn your mic on, please.
Brian and I had a brief conversation with Teresa about making sure our vendors get paid because this is now way into the middle of the month. And we could have just a conference call to approve on a date certain, our kind of closing out the year, paying the bills that come forward to the board, number one, and to any other business that might come to help him close out the books.
Okay.
For fiscal year 2023. So, those would be two items. A conference call would suffice just to do that, so we can pay our vendors and other actions that are necessary. I don't know if we want to add anything to that.
And that time works for you, Summer, then? Okay.
One thing I was thinking with, it's only two days later, and one thing we could do to expedite the process is not run it through our generic mail. We could just go out and buy a bunch of stamps and mail them in the, it'll get there faster that way. So, I think two days later, it will work if we use stamps, and it'll get there faster.
Sounds good.
So, we don't need the extra conference call?
Personally, I don't think so. If it was five or six days after the 17th, I'd be a little more nervous, but two days, we'll get them out as quick as we can.
Well, use your judgment. If there's a case we need to have it a week earlier, that's fine, but it wouldn't need to be face-to-face. We just, one agenda item, conference call, and keep our tables current.
And Madam Chairman, would we do 5:15 then as well on the 19th?
Amanda's just sending me, Amanda's also sending me that everyone's available that Tuesday, the 18th as well, so.
Summer, what time can you get back by? Or Dr. Schultz, what time can you get back by? Yeah?
I can be back.
Okay. That was, she'll be coming back from.
Okay, we'll set that, I do. We'll set that time though, but let's plan on Wednesday, July 19th then. Thanks to Amanda for doing that doodle poll. Do I need to make a motion on that, Brian?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, thanks. All right. Give me a check, Brian. We have our first, we're going on to some policy stuff now. We have one, two, three, four, five, five first readings. And so, policy committee members, feel free to jump in as I'm going to kind of clip along. We have the first reading of revisions made to policy G A personnel goals.
Yes, that one just has a few word changes. For example, one says to conduct employee appraisal, and we changed appraisal to evaluation. They're just words that are better descriptors of what we want to say. So, that's all that's in that one.
Okay. Then we have the first reading of policy G B A equal opportunity employment.
That's pretty much a federal requirement, and so, we just followed the federal guidelines there.
And is it a whole new policy?
I think, yeah, it was updated to meet the new requirements by the federal government. Yep.
All right, then we have the first reading of revisions being made to policy G B C Staff Ethics.
Kind of been totally reworked. What we had, and that's from ASBSD, was totally taken out, and it was rather rewritten to meet and to be updated, to meet guidelines and be updated.
Only comment I had on that was, do you feel like that covers, like when representing us on social media, social media sites, does the?
That's coming up.
I just didn't know how the overlay of those two policy looked, and I didn't know if we wanted to look at those together because I just didn't feel like that was covering the ethics of representing a school district online.
Yeah, that's a whole nother one, Kelly, and that's coming up. I think it's, do we have a list?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's acceptable. It's acceptable use, and then Staff, Student, Social Networking Policy. And we decided we could combine those.
Okay.
And we're going to ask Jason to maybe take a look at those quickly before we do that. So, that is covered there very thoroughly.
Okay. Didn't know if there was some redundancy with those two. Okay. Then we have the first reading of revisions being made to Staff Conflict of Interest.
There's some redactions and a few things added or wording changed, but basically, it meets the guidelines for what a conflict of interest is.
I was, so if I'm reading this right, so if your, like niece or nephew or cousin taught in a school, you would just have to disclose that? I was a little confused how far out it went with the family. I mean, you do have lots of families of teachers, and so, I just didn't know if that was, it seemed a little too far for me, but.
It's the supervision and evaluation of those people, not to the board level.
Correct.
So, it reads, "In order that there's no conflict of interest in the supervision and evaluation of employees at any time, any administrator may be responsible for supervision and evaluation of an employee who is despised," all those things.
Yeah.
And I agree, it kind of went pretty far out in terms of relationships, but at the same time, I think that's probably better than having it too narrow, so.
And then, if that did happen, they could just declare a conflict of interest. Correct. Okay.
I might add here on, oh, you may not sell textbooks, instructional supplies, equipment, reference books, and other school products to the schools in the district. That's in the South Dakota Constitution. Borrowed from Indiana because they had real problems, and those states were, it was probably fraud or whatever it might be. But that is.
I like it. All right. All right, and we have the first reading of revisions being made to policy K M C, Annual Notification to Parents.
Is this was needed to, for our title program to be updated? And what was written here has been passed by, who was it? The title person.
The title coordinator.
Coordinator in the state. And so, this is the language that is recommended to use.
Didn't have any problems with that? Okay. We have one second reading tonight, and that is the second reading of revisions being made to policy E F D Meal Charge.
We had Laura look this over and gave us her opinions of things. And as we mentioned last time, we changed, we changed a few wordings like the Child Nutrition Department or Designee because in case they were out or something. There has to be an approved credit card to be used, and certain credit cards cannot be used, and that's according to guidelines and not, not just our call on that. And then, like we mentioned last month, we do have a program called Food for Thought that you can donate to, or that balances from the year can be donated to, to help those negative balances and maybe, maybe help families catch up some when they need it. And we will be accepting that. So, do you have any questions on that? No?
No. Okay. And then, we have seven notification policies. First is notification of review of policy B D D B, Board Meeting Agendas and Formats.
And we're probably going to combine that with policy G B. Oh, I'm sorry, we're on the format. Yeah, there were some things that on that list are somewhat outdated, or we might want to be changing.
Yep.
So, look that one over as well. I don't have that copy on my pile, I don't think.
And then, we have notification of review of policy G B C B, Staff Conduct.
Yeah, that's the one we want to combine with G B E Staff Responsibilities. They're almost.
Identical.
Almost identical, so we're going to combine those. What's not in one, we'll put in the other.
So, you may see that next time that we've done that. So, we'll try to point that out to you to pay careful attention to that.
Okay. And then, we have notification of review of policy G B C B A, Freedom of Expression.
That's from a new law that was passed from the legislative session. So, that's from ASBSD.
Okay. We have notification of review of policy G B C B A A, Search and Seizure.
And that one, we just want to be sure, maybe at like back to school time, that it's really given notification to parents and learners that your locker, your computer, anything that's school property can be searched at any time. And just to make students and parents aware that this policy is in the handbook, and they do need to be aware of it.
Then we have notification of review of policy G B C B B, Employee Use of Networking Sites.
That's the, those last three.
The last three.
We're probably going to combine.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's networking sites, acceptable use, and.
Staff, student, social networking.
So, all of those could be updated and put together.
So, the second one was G B C B C, Employee Acceptable Use, and notification of policy G B C C, Staff, Student. GBBCC, staff student social networking policy.
And that's the ones who are going to have Jason quick, take a look at them for us, so that we can get his input as well.
Great. All right, finished with the policy section of our meeting. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
By Wes?
Second.
Seconded by Terry. Yeah, sorry. Thought I was caught up. Nope, one more. Okay, moved by Wes and then seconded by Terry. All right, Brian, we're ready for that. Brian? There we go.
I'm hindering the progress. I have, I have a request on the minutes. I would like to have what you prepared, Kelly, on the introduction of the super tag in the minutes. It's nicely ordered and I don't.
I'll give that to you, Brian. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to our new and unfinished business. We have action item 10.1, and that's approval to move the July 2023 board meeting to July 19th.
I saw move.
Second.
Moved by Deb and seconded by Wes. Ready for that vote? Thanks, Brian. 10.2, we have approval of the revised 2023-2024 school calendar. You can, board members see it attached there. The changes to the calendar reflect the update made by the calendar committee meeting. That's how our calendar is formed. That was at the March 9th, 2023 meeting. The changes include incorporating two additional staff development days that came out of our negotiation process. Those staff development days are January 15th and May 20th. We also are shortening the winter break by one day for the, so the last day for students is Friday, May 17th at noon, rather than a Monday at noon. You'll also see a couple of days that could be added as snow day recommendation makeup days instead of adding them to the end of the school year. And then we did make sure that the Martin Luther King Junior holiday is also listed, even though that's a no school day, it is a staff development day, and then the holiday is also listed on the calendar.
And this was accepted by BEA, correct?
I don't know that answer, Brian.
I don't know either.
Okay.
Okay, because I know usually we have, they give approval as well, you know, as well as the board. But I'm assuming since those days were included that we talked about in negotiations that they have reviewed this.
I don't know that answer.
Anyone here from BEA tonight either?
I do want to maybe send.
I mean, we can always revise it again if we had to, right? Yeah, okay.
I can check with Amanda. She's watching, I think. Did BEA?
I only have one comment about the calendar, and I, I've mentioned it before, but I would like us to look into having remote days instead of snow days, if there's any way we could. I know our sixth through 12th grade have a one-to-one device that they, they can have access to. As far as K through five, they have many, many minutes. I mean, this year we dismissed many, many minutes of time where nothing happened. And I just think if we can do something on these days when students are home, it, we should try to do that in this day and age. I don't know if there's any support for that, but I.
I do not, I do not support that. And I, I've talked to teachers from Minnesota where it was put into effect, and they said it was basically just a waste of time. It was more work for the teachers, they had to get things ready, and then students did not turn in anything. I mean, they had a very, very poor response from students. So I just don't see the benefit of it. I mean, I know this year was unusual because we had a really large number of snow days, but in the past, we've had maybe one or two. I, I would be in opposition to that. So that, if we're going to, maybe we can discuss that another time, but I'm just going to voice my opposition.
Just a note, I did get from Amanda that BEA was part of the calendar committee, and so they have approved this as well. The remote days aren't on there for this year, so I don't think we're voting on that, but if that needs to be added to agenda item, yeah. Ready for the vote on this calendar? Okay. Okay, sorry, I need a, I'll make a motion to approve the revised calendar.
Second.
Moved by me, seconded by Terry. All right, that motion passes for the revised school calendar. Next, we're looking for a motion of approval of the Helpline Center Network Care Partner Agency memorandum of understanding, and then we can discuss that, too.
I move the Helpline Center Network of Care Partner partnering with the agency.
And I'll second that.
Moved by Terry and seconded by Deb. Any comments?
This is great. I think this is phenomenal in this community. It is a huge service to our learners and their families just to better connect everybody. Like Deb said, it would help our social worker tremendously with, and, you know, the new facility that we have downtown is great with the Backpack Project and everything right there. So we could have a one-stop shop for a social worker to get into the system. Families can use it. Watertown has been using it, and it's been just really well received. I'm really excited about this. I think with mental health, food insecurity, everything that our learners and families are dealing with right now, this is very exciting, very exciting.
The other really cool thing about it is a reduction in paperwork for families that are wanting to get involved with these services, because that's one of the drawbacks for families to fill out form after form with each different agency. This will put it all in a clearinghouse in one location, and then the different partners can access it. And then the other big benefit is that it's free to us because it's part of a grant for this first year. And if it continues, the price is very reasonable, and we'll, we would review it again at that time.
All right, Brian, we're ready for that vote. All right, motion passes. Next, we have a motion of approval of a supplement to the 2022-2023 budget. Board members, you were able to review that ahead of time? Any comments? Our mo, I will move the. Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the supplement to the budget. Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Discuss.
Do you want me to just briefly cover it?
That'd be great.
I think that would be best, Brian.
What the, what generally when you supplement a budget, it's to cover areas that go over in expenses. And you can see the top two are S R 2 and S R 3. Those are increased expenses due to added, whether it's the counselor at the high school, it looks like the TOSA at Hillcrest and Madera, and other items that were added. I don't know if Jason can pull it up or not.
I can see it.
Not knowing why it says voting in progress, that's a little odd, I didn't push vote yet, but, and then jumping down, there's a couple of general fund items that went over as budget as well. Capital outlay had a few minor items. The big one, you can see why we got, had to receive 720 through 2,000 from extraordinary cost fund. The special ed had some major budgets out, or functions that went over budget. You can see the two biggest are the tuition, professional services, and residential services. And so that's, especially that's, there was just such an increase in costs in that fund this year, and we knew it was coming. It just, it's, we had a couple of auto district placements that are, and some tuition as well. Are there any questions on any particular item? But this is just a thing we do every year to make sure that the functions stay positive at the end of the year. And I may have a few more at the July board meeting, depending on how our end-of-year bills come in. They should be minor.
I moved, that was seconded by Deb. Any other comments, board members, questions? Brian, we're ready for that vote. All right, motion passes. Now we're looking for a longer, a longer piece of business, an approval of the resolution authorizing the execution terms, insurance, sale, and payment of the limited tax capital outlay certificates and the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $25 million of the Brookings School District of Brookings County and Moody Counties, South Dakota.
I move approval.
I second.
Moved by Wes and seconded by Teresa.
Discussion, we looked at this, actually, at length in a finance committee, and so we, we're still looking at certificates probably in late fall, and maybe in two increments, part of it in this calendar year, part of it next calendar year, trying to structure it. Jerry Spelman, how you pronounce it, is working with us on, on timing of that. We've been patient relative to the issue. Our patience has somewhat paid off, and the rates are lower than when we first discussed this back in February, they've kind of bounced around, so, but I, I'm confident that if we wait, we might, we certainly can perhaps benefit. And then, I've said this before, we're leaving some room in this. We may not be issuing all full 25 million, we might leave several million, or maybe as much as, I'll give a number, but more than one million of, for using cash, which then saves us the interest and protects us in the future if we want to have some other projects. So meanwhile, there's a thought behind this number, and the whole process is very sound financially, and our capital outlay is in a very good position to handle this in the course of time that we're proposing relative to debt service length of, of up to 20 years. Am I correct, 20 years? 20 years.
Correct.
And so with that, I would encourage approval of this motion, which has to be approved by a, by a, by a vote by the board in order to proceed, and then we can proceed anytime that our administrative officers so choose.
Moved by Wes and seconded by Teresa. We're ready for that vote, Brian. All right. Our next item is an executive session. This is pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2 subsection 1 personnel.
Move approval to go on executive session, discuss.
And we do not have any action, I, or right now, we don't have any action items, even though it's listed, we will not have an action item after executive session.
And I second that.
So the public knows. All right, Brian, we're ready for that vote. Sure, yep. Summer, if you have time to stay, I know you have to go by. Okay, just a couple of minutes. Yep.